All right, Scott, we're recording. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everybody. I apologize. You may be hearing a chocolate lab barking in the background. So hopefully he'll behave himself. Anyway, I just want to welcome everybody to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Ryanbeck meeting of January 19th, 2022. And before I start on the agenda, I have to read something so we can conduct this virtually. So here goes. This meeting is being held virtually pursuant to New York State legislation under New York State Senate Bills S five zero 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 one and New York State Assembly Bill A four zero 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 one, which has extended virtual access to public meetings held pursuant to New York State's open meetings law. This legislation allows this ZBA to meet, this ZBA meeting to be held remotely and allows the public to virtually participate. Originally, the, the section, these sections of the law went until January 15th, 2022, but they were just recently extended it until February 14th, 2022. So the legislation is in effect and allows us to do that. All right. With that said, I'll do a roll call. Catherine Clark.
Here.
Tim Allenbrook.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
All right. Tim Ekinopole.
Here.
All right, we're all present. Scott Bergen present. All right. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes? I reviewed them. I didn't see anything. I didn't notice any errors or needs for corrections, but how about the rest again? Anybody have any questions, concerns or corrections?
They look pretty good. They look pretty good to me as well.
Yeah, and, and I'm referring by the way to the virtual meeting minutes. Or the, the meeting minutes for the virtual meeting held on December 15th, 2021. All right, not hearing any questions, concerns, or corrections, I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as presented for the virtual meeting of December 15th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor? I?
Hi.
All right, anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Let's see, the first order of business is the new case of T Court, case number one zero two four. And I see Mark is here for that. Mark, you're not, you're not a rookie, so you know what to do. Okay. Just lead us through what you want to do. And you know, assuming that there's enough information, we'll accept the application and set it up for a public hearing. And that public hearing, by the way, I believe is I want to say the 18th. February 16th of February. So anyway. Okay. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me, Mark Kerminski, I'm representing T Court LLC. The property is located at 195 River Road. The total parcel size is a little more than 55 acres. And prior to this meeting, I had, you know, my office had prepared, you know, a PDF, you know, a PowerPoint, so to speak, to take, to take this board through this specific application. But I just wanted to give the board some information about the project before we start that. And so I have been working on T Court LLC and some adjoining properties for several years. And this specific application is being made to the town zoning board of appeals for two area variance applications. One for an accessory structure greater than 20 feet. And then also, and so that's 125 2781. And then also for area variance consideration for accessory structures in front of the principal dwelling. And so the way that we came to this board was it's, it's been a process for actually a couple of years that has, we've had multiple meetings and discussions with the town planning board. And ultimately, we went, last year in 2021, we went through a master plan application for not only this property, but two adjoining properties once. Once, once, actually, I'll say two properties to the south. Those are identified as Astor Courts and Brindle Valley LLC. And so in working with the town planning board and, and also its consultants developed a, a master plan for all three of the properties. And so, and so for this application that the ZBA is that we're going to present this evening, there's also a subsequent application to the town planning board for this, for the planning board's consideration of site plan and special permit. And so this particular part of our, and we've made various applications and they're all in, you know, they all have been outlined in various ways through the master plan document. And so now our, our, you know, the owner and the applicant are you know, proceeding with, you know, various, various applications that have been outlined, as I said, in the master plan, in a phased, in a phased approach. And so this, this particular one for the ZBA is, is actually phase three of the master plan. And I tried to include, you know, as much information for the ZBA without burdening, burdening them with too, with too much information. And so also on this, on this Zoom meeting with me this evening, are the other consultants that are involved with this project. And so it's Howard Williams is, is on, and he is the landscape architect for the project and he is with Hollander Associates. And then the project architects are, are also on, and that's Cynthia Philkoff and Armand DBS. And so I think what I'd like to do, Jim, is if we could, and I just give the, the ZBA, you know, the board a brief overview of what are prepared for, you know, slides to take a look at. It's just, you know, defining, you know, the location of this particular application. And then getting into some of the details, you know, specific to, to, to the, you know, to the area variance applications. And then I've also provided some images, both plans, you know, architectural elevations and architectural renderings associated with the various structures that are being considered. And ultimately, you know, part, part of the application. So Jim, if you could start with the first sheet. So this is, and I went to PDF, so Jim, maybe if you could zoom in a little bit where I have, where I have the rectangular boxes.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll, I'll start with this first. It's, this, this is an overall plan that actually it, it actually includes all three of the parcels that I just mentioned. And so these, the rectangular boxes that are shown here, and so, and just for orientation, Hudson River is on the left side or the west side of the drawing. That's where Jim's moving the cursor. And then on the, on the right side, it's ultimately River Road. And so there's a, in this particular case, there's, you know, access via a driveway from River Road. It actually passes alongside Front Cliff Nursing Home. And actually, where Jim's moving the cursor, that's the nursing home right there. It's on the, it's on the east side of that lower left-hand rectangle. And so I, so I'm starting with this, this is kind of a, and, and just, this is just a, you know, a, like an overall plan of the, of, of the structures that are being considered for this application. So I'm going to start on the west side and then I'm going to go clockwise. So where that larger rectangle is. And, and once again, just reminding the, the ZBA that this is, and these, these plans have also been submitted to the planning board. So there's, there's, you know, there's, you know, more detail associated, you know, with the drawing that is, is, you know, it's, it's pertinent to the planning board application. But just including it, I just included all that information to this board. So in the, so in this rectangle, there's a small structure that's located to the, to the west of the residence. And it is, it is a, it's actually a treehouse. And so in, in working with the zoning administrator, Michael Trimble, you know, obviously there's some code that has been written that allows treehouses in the town of Rhinebeck. But in this particular case, felt that it was more appropriate to handle this particular structure as an accessory structure. Just due to the nature of its construction and the fact that it has some utilities associated with it. So so this, this first structure that, that I was going to discuss is the treehouse. And so Jim, if you could go to the, if you could go to the next slide, please. Can you get to the next one, Jim?
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't go through. It should have rendered. You're still on the same one?
Still on the same one.
No, I'm, I'm seeing the next one.
Yeah. Same. Not me.
Yeah, not me.
That's interesting. Let me just start it again.
Okay.
Never had that happen before.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing two of 27.
Did it come up, Mark?
No. Yeah. So yes, now it came up. So if you zoom into that, that upper one. Yeah, the, the larger rectangle there. You, you can see that. So, so there's a circle. Yeah. Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
And so that is the location of the treehouse. And and so there are some plans that were developed in association with the treehouse. And so this particular area, area variance being requested is for height. And so right now, this, this structure was attached to a tree, or actually multiple trees. And it's, it has a platform and the platform at the, at the east end of it is approximately 16 feet above the ground surface. And then the platform on the westerly side is about 20 feet from, from the ground surface. And then when you consider the height, you know, the height of the structure and the type of the structure, Jim, could actually go to the next slide, please?
Hey, Mark, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this the old Astor Playhouse? That we're looking at?
No, it's not. Oh, well, it's the, well, it's, it's, it's T Court. So when you say playhouse, could you be more specific? First, and actually if Howard or Cynthia or Armon, please jump in if you're just helping with the playhouse. If there, if there was a certain structure that was defined as playhouse, I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, it was the Astor Playhouse is where the Clintons got married and.
Yeah, that, that actually is the Astor Courts building. That's further to the south of this. It's actually a separate parcel.
Okay. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, so Jim, can you go to the next slide? I think so. Next slide should have some details for the treehouse. There we go. Okay. And so I have a few slides for the treehouse. So now you can see, these, these are engineered drawings that have, that were developed by Murray Engineering for the treehouse. And so there's a series of three, I believe. And so you can see that, you know, if you, if you look at this, there's a few sections that are shown for the, for the treehouse and it shows, you know, an elevated structure attached to two trees and elevated above the ground surface. So next, next one, please. Just some more details relative to the treehouse. And then the next one, please. And this kind of gives you a visual. This is, this is, this is how it exists right now. So you can see, you know, that it's attached to two trees. One is going right through the structure. And then there's a, there's a porch on the west side of it. There's a tree going that also. And then you can see a walkway on the, on the, on the east side or to the left of that photograph where, where it walks down to existing grade. And then there are some, there's some lawn steps that, that, you know, go up to the, near the, near the residence. So this, you know, this proposal in front of the planning board is to, there's, there's going to be a permanent walkway that's, that's going to go all the way towards the house. And, but this, this application to the ZBA is just for height. And so when you consider from the existing ground surface to, because of the type of the structure, it's the, it's the midpoint, midpoint between the peak and the eaves. It's, it's, it varies between 28 to 30 feet in height from the existing ground surface. So that's the, that's the first area variance that is, that's, that's being, that we're speaking about and, and asking for consideration. So Jim, if you could go to the next slide, please. So once again, I'm back to, I'm using this, I'll, I'll always go back to this drawing. It's kind, you know, it's details that we have prepared for, you know, for, for the application. And I'll just keep going back to this drawing just to try to help orient the board as to, you know, where we are relative to the property. So now we're going to go to the, the ellipse. As I said, we're going to go in a clockwise manner. So on that upper rectangle, Jim, if you could zoom into that ellipse a little bit, please? Right? And so this is, so this is our second area variance that we're requesting. And I'll just say the balance of the area variances being requested are for a location of accessory structures within the front yard of the principal dwelling. So that's, that is 125 2784, I believe. And so there is a, there's an existing guest cottage at this location. You see it's on the left side of the ellipse. And then what's being proposed is a mudroom and garage addition. And so that will be to the east of it. And, and, you know, and there's obviously a network of, you know, existing driveways, gravel driveways that that are through the property and, and, and it provides, you know, access to this structure. And just, and obviously with the, you know, addition of the, of the, it's a three bay garage, some minor, you know, site works associated with that, which is, which that specific application is being considered by the planning board. Next slide, please, Jim. So this is, so this is a, this is a drawing prepared by Hollander Associates. This shows the, I just wanted to give the board a visual of the existing cottage. Next slide, please. This is an elevation prepared by DBS Philkoff showing the cottage, the mudroom connection to the, to the proposed three bay garage. My next slide, please. Same, another, this is an east elevation view. Next, next slide, Jim, please. Thank you. South elevation. Next slide, please. And west elevation. Next slide, please. And so here's a a render drawing, show, you know, which shows the, obviously the existing cottage on the, on the left side of this rendering. And then the mudroom addition along with the three bay garage. And please, if anyone has questions as I'm going through this, stop me. I was just trying to, you know, get, you know, just take you through, you know, the, the entire application. And then, and also if you have obviously any questions at the end, happy to go back through these.
Yeah, just a quick question on the garage above it. What is, is just storage?
Yes, there is.
On the, on the, the second floor, so to speak.
Yes. And so one thing that I probably should have brought up in the beginning is on the, on the base drawings that were submitted to the planning board and also to the ZBA. I, I actually outlined all the floor areas for the, all the existing structure, existing accessory and proposed accessory structures on the property. And that included, and then I, I further detailed which were roofed accessory structures and which were not roofed, which were non-roofed accessory structures. So all that information is on the, is on the site plan. So, you know, obviously we, you know, when, when you have a, a property like this with multiple accessory structures, also took a look at to, to ensure that our total floor area was not greater than what was allowed. And so we are, we are under the allowable floor area for accessory structures. It's a little bit different. Zoning district, it's not the standard 1500 square feet. Because it's, in, in this zoning district, it's based on a total parcel area and you're allowed 300 square feet per acre of, you know, and portion thereof for, for this particular parcel. And as I mentioned in the beginning, it's about 55, a little more than 55 acres. So we are under the allowable floor area. And I detailed that on my plans. There's, there's two tables that are located on, on, on my site plan.
Mark?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, first, when you showed the cottage, you said it was the original cottage. And then, but then you said it was a drawing. Is that what the cottage looks like now?
Yeah, it, it's, the cottage exists, Richard.
Is that what it looks like?
Um, yes.
Okay, thanks. Is, is the garage bigger than the house, than the cottage?
Yes.
Big garage. Yeah, I might add some of the reasoning for a three bay garage in this location is the tea house, original building is a very small house relative to the size of property. It was, it was originally just a, you know, truly a tea house that has been expanded over a number of decades since its, its original construction. And it only has two, two bays of garage in it. For, for this particular client, he has more than two vehicles. And it seemed to work like just more reasonable to add on a garage to this structure than to add on to the T Court building itself. So that's one reason why the, the garage in this particular building seems larger than the original structure. It's, it's really just a guest house. But it's serving the, the main house.
Okay. There's no other questions. Our next, next slide, please. So we're, we're now back.
I can hear you.
Yeah, Armit, Armit Diaz was trying to say something. It looked like.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see, I didn't hear it.
I can't hear him, but his lips are moving. He's trying to say something. I don't know what he's saying.
Cynthia.
He has to undo.
Can you offer any?
He's, he's unmuted.
He's, he's coming into next to me. I'm in the other room.
You weren't muted, but the audience was.
Armon and Cynthia, the architects. I just want to clarify that there is a little change on fenestration at the, the guest house. There's a garage door that's being removed and being replaced with windows.
Right. So if you go back to that other rendering, you can see it before as it currently is. So one more back, please. Right? So that, that is how it exists now. And it's a kind of unusual condition where there was a garage door that only exists on the exterior. It doesn't exist on the interior. That's a solid wall. So we're removing that garage door and adding two windows there. And then using that aesthetic for the new garage doors.
There'd be no change to the massing or the form of the existing building, just some change to the fenestration.
Okay. Ready to move forward, everyone?
Yes.
Yes. Next slide, please. So remember, I was, I was moving a clock, I was going clockwise, but we're now going to go to the, the drawing where Jim has the, so that's the, the rectangle on the, on the left side, lower left, right? And so, and maybe if you hold it right there for a second, Jim, that might be helpful. So associated with this project is, you know what? I'll let Howard, Howard, if you could just, just bring the, just a brief discussion about the train.
Yes, and this, this is the perhaps the most unusual and unique feature proposed on the property. And this is a a miniature train. When we say miniature, it's, it's a rideable, but very small train with tracks that actually are only about seven inches apart from each other. And, and train cars that are only about 18 inches tall. But they this is the kind of thing that is, there are some interesting clubs around the country with the people who are into, into studying the, the history of trains through making these miniatures. And it's, it's proposed on this property in part because Vincent Astor, who was the last Astor to, to, to live on an estate, had such a train himself. And the vocation in this, this oval here was where he had the, the, was the, sort of, I guess you'd call it the southern loop of his train station, train, and it ran north up into our northern neighbor's property. You can see on this drawing is there's a property line with a couple of loops on it. So we only own a small portion of where Vincent had his train. And so we're actually extending our, our train east and west, whereas he ran it up north. So to service the, that train, since some of these are going to be steam operated engines, they do require you know, interior storage as well as shops to, to maintain them. So these will be small buildings that function as a roundhouse in carbon. So the roundhouse is the art structure for, for servicing the train engines to, to right there. So you see steaming bays where they actually have to fire up to become operable. And then the long bar where it says roundhouse is, is truly the carbine. So the, the train cars that the engines pull will be stored in that. And then just, just north of that is a small station house for waiting passengers. There also the, our, our client is very interested in the history of, of Astor Courts. And particularly how Vincent Astor's train, as well as some real actual commercial trains ran through the property. Um, there was the Huckleberry Line to the south and then the, the Hudson River Lines, you know, on the west side along the river. Um, so this station is going to, to, um, care, act as a small museum for some of the memorabilia that we have inherited on, in the purchase of the property that, that are relative to the train.
Okay, um, so, uh, it's, Jim, if you could, thank you, Howard. Um, if you could go to the next slide, please, Jim. Um, so obviously here, and, uh, so these, and, uh, Armon and Cynthia, please feel free to comment on these. Uh, these are various elevations of the roundhouse, the car barn, and then ultimately we'll get to the, uh, station house also. So, um, just to, uh, take, take us through these.
It might be a little easier to look at the renderings because it's difficult to, um, understand the curve in two dimensions. So, Jim, if you could keep going, I think that really helps you understand.
So, can I ask a question, quick question? If, if the trains, if those tracks are only about seven inches apart and the train is only about eighteen inches tall, does the scale seem totally off here? These buildings are people-sized buildings? From where you showed the truck and the, and the people standing in them?
Yeah, I think that's a rendering, um, matter. The trains, the trains in this rendering are, are larger than what they, they truly will be. Um, and we'll have to, uh, to address that.
But, but the structures are real people-sized.
The structures are true. Yes, yes. You can see the benches inside the, uh, pass through there. That, that's actual.
Right. But, but so on that one too, I mean, I was just surprised when you said the trains were so small. On that re- rendering of the station, the train is also much larger than we, we'll be. Is that right?
That, that tracks are, I believe, sixteen inches apart?
Oh, sixteen?
No, 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 no. Um, uh, they, they actually are seven and one quarter inches apart. That, so that might be a miscommunication on, on our part and then we'll have the drawings corrected.
Wait, would you like to go back to the?
I won't, I won't labor this all, but. In, in looking at some of the historical photos of Vincent Anster, I think there was one of him sitting on one of these trains. Is it possible to ride on it?
Yes, it is possible.
We have, we have, we have a video of him riding on it.
Okay, thank you. I, I mean, I don't think my questions are really germane to what we're trying to do here. It was more my own curiosity.
Catherine, this is Jim. I, I actually had the same question and, and Mark and Howard and others. You know, we'll, we'll get into that for the planning board, but that was one of the questions I had was just the scale. Um, and if that had changed, because that was, that was the discussion at the planning board level in terms of the size of the track and disturbance area. But yeah, Catherine, I don't think that pertains to the applications in front of you today.
Yeah. Thank you, though, for that clarification.
Okay, um, and just maybe take, so this is the, um, um, roundhouse and car barn. Our next slide, please, Jim. And then, uh, station house, I guess we can go through these and get right to the rendering. There's the station house and then I believe there are two renderings of the station house. All right. So I just, I just, I just want to keep moving through. Just, and, and anyone has questions, please stop me. Um, and then, uh, fi- finally, we'll go on, uh, the third rectangle. And so, uh, this is a location, there's, uh, there's an existing maintenance barn, uh, that's, that's located on, on the property. And so, uh, this proposal, uh, is there's an, there's an addition being proposed, um, to that maintenance barn. So where Jim was just, had the cursor, that's the existing barn right there. And then where the, where the ellipse is, that's the, that's the proposed maintenance barn. And there's some storage bins associated with that also. Um, and so next slide, please, Jim. Um, this went to a Hollander drawing, which on the left side of the drawing, it shows, uh, loca- uh, location. Th- these are details relative to, uh, the proposed, uh, maintenance building and storage bins, uh, new access associated with it. Upper left, you can see just the corner of the existing barn. And then obviously maintenance building, I should say. And then, um, and then that photograph, uh, on the lower right, uh, portion of the drawing, that is the existing, uh, maintenance building. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we'll just take you through these elevations quickly because we have some renderings. Uh, next, next slide. Yes.
What, what's upstairs? Anything upstairs or?
Um. Storage is upstairs.
Storage? Are there any bathrooms in this structure?
No.
But no.
No? Okay.
Um, so here's, here's one, um, rendering of the, uh, of the barn. And you can see the barn, uh, on the left side of this rendering. And on the right side, you, you get a look at the storage bins. And actually, if you go to the next slide, Jim, it, it'll show another. There are the storage bins. Keep, you can go to the next slide, please. And here's, uh, another perspective of the, of the new storage barn and, and the storage bins associated with it. So I, I think that takes us through, um, that's the last slide, correct, Jim?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Uh, so this takes, so I'll just do a quick summary. Um, and, uh, so it's, it, it gives, uh, just simplifying the application. It's, you know, application for area variance for height for the, uh, for the, uh, for the treehouse. And then, uh, application for, um, area variances for, uh, multiple for the, um, accessory structures located in the front yard of the principal residence. And so where Jim's got, has the cursor, he's moving, that's where the principal residence is. That's the, that's the tea house. So all those other structures, you know, the guest cottage with the, with the mudroom and the garage. And then the, the buildings associated, um, with the, with the train. And then also the, the new addition to the maintenance building. All those structures are located in the front yard. And so, um, that's, in summary, that's, that's the application in front of this board. So, uh, one, um, one height, uh, uh, area variance. And then, um, then the balance of the accessory structures are for, uh, being in the front yard of the prin- principal residence.
So is there a variance request for each of those structures then, I guess?
Yes, it is. For each, each one of those, all, all those structures are, uh, in, included in, in the request.
Yeah, Mark, you said, you said the, um, the treehouse was gonna have an elevated walkway? Or maybe I misunderstood that. Is there a rendering of that?
Yeah, if we go back to, uh, back one more slide. Please, Jim. Oh, is there a rendering? No, we have, we have an elevation of it. If you could go, yeah, one more, Jim? Right there. If you look in the lower right, you see it's broken. Um, yeah, it's that north elevation. It's right there. So there's, uh, you know, if you went back to the, to the existing photograph, you can see it's just steps going. There, there's a, there's a, yeah, there, there's, there's a, a walkway down and then it goes to some long steps. Yeah, exactly. And so now it's just, it's gonna be a walkway all the way, um, you know, towards the existing residence.
So it would go straight out from the treehouse?
Correct.
Yeah.
Mark, when was the treehouse built?
Oh, gosh, someone help me on that one. It's, uh.
Well, it was, it was built by the previous owner, Robert Duffy. So this is something that we inherited with the purchase of the property. So we don't know exactly the date, but it was prior to, um, eight years ago.
Was, was there a, a, originally a, a permit for it?
We don't know. There was not. That's why we're before.
There wasn't. So, so there's some history with that. So we've, we've been working with the town, uh, building department, zoning department and planning board to leave the structure. And so, uh, this application to the ZBA is, is part of that to, to make this a legal structure.
Right, all right.
Any questions?
I don't, I'm still on the elevated walkway. Um, where does that end up on the property?
So it's, there's a, um, I didn't include those drawings. Um, so on the, on the west side of the existing residence, there's, there's a series of patios. And so it's, and so thi- this is, let's see if we can. Yeah, great. There we go. Right? And so you can, so, so, so looking at the contours, right? So you can see where, uh, so it's to the, it's between where it says PS and SF on that drawing. So that S is a designation for silk prints. So you see where, see, we get away from the grade and where it levels off. So that's literally gonna be the landing spot for that elevated walkway.
How many feet is that?
Uh, linear feet?
Yeah.
Um, but I, I'll have to, I'll have to get back to you with that.
I, I would guess that's close to thirty, thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Well, once again, so that's part, that, so that is part of the application to the planning board, um, for their consideration of, you know, the site and special permit.
Mark, I think you said it before, but I just think it bears repeating that the master plan was reviewed by the planning board, kind of the overall concept, uh, and approved by the planning board last year. Uh, it's just that as part of that master plan now, the applicant has to come back in for site plans, special use permits and others for each of these individual elements.
Anybody else have any, uh, questions of Mark or, uh, the other consultants?
Um, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah.
I, I looked through the package. It looked very good.
Yeah, I looked through the package too. And as usual, it, um, from Mark, um, it's a very thorough and, um, comprehensive package. I appreciate that. We, we don't always have that luxury, but, uh, we usually get, we always get it with you. So I, I, I thank you. Um, I don't have any questions about this. I, I, I actually was wondering about when that treehouse, I thought you said the treehouse was built in place. And I've been on the board for eighteen years and I've ne- I, I, I mean, I, I, I know I can forget things, but I wouldn't forget that. Um, so, uh, I'm glad that mystery is solved, but, um, unless, uh, anybody has any other, um, questions or requests of additional, uh, information, are, are there any from any of the board members?
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah.
Scott, if there's one thing I could offer to this board is, you know, I, and so I tried to be quick about this. There's, you know, so a lot of information and history with this. Um, and I try to be, you know, uh, efficient in the information presented. But I'm certainly offering to this board, um, if they, if they wish to have a site visit and, and, and get a visual on this, happy to arrange that, um, um, you know, with, with the board.
I'm confident that each and every board member will be out there, um, and, and maybe we'll, we'll, we'll arrange that, um, you know, so you'll, we only have to have you out there once, but, uh.
Okay.
Once have a tour bus.
Yeah, right. I, I assume, um, like, for example, uh, where the, uh, uh, the new garage is off of, uh, that, that, that small little house, that's gonna be, that's staked out. We'll have an idea of the, the footprint and things like that. That, that would be my only request, just so we have an idea when we go out there and we see the little cottage. We know what the footprint of the, um, uh, you know, the mudroom is and, and the three bay garage. And, and anything that's new, um, just, just have it staked. So we have an idea. That's all.
Absolutely, Scott. Uh, they, I will, I'll have everything delineated.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, uh, that, that would be my only request is just to have a staking of whatever is new.
Okay.
Um, and, and actually, uh, getting back to what Tim Ekonomo said, maybe we, we can have an idea of, um, the, the walkway, you know, where it ultimately is gonna start.
Absolutely.
Is that kind of stuff, just, just to give us an idea. Um, so, but anyway, um, I, I, at this time, uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the application and complete, as complete. And I'll put this on for a public hearing, which I believe again, and Gretchen, she can correct me, is, uh, the sixteenth of February. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Catherine Clark, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, are anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. All right. So, um, we've accepted the application as presented and in, um, will arrange with you, um, at your convenience, uh, a site visit, uh, on this. And it'll be on for a public hearing on, uh, February sixteenth. And as you know, um, the public, such as it is, uh, surrounding neighbors, um, will have an opportunity to, uh, review this application with you at the public hearing and ask questions of you and, and make comments and things like that. So.
So I'm, I'm sorry, um, I, I have one more question.
Sure.
Do you mind if I ask that?
Not at all.
At the, at the end of, of this massive, uh, paperwork here that Mark puts together, which is wonderful. Um, there's affidavits from, these are different neighbors within five hundred feet?
Uh, no, I think that those are, th- those are the, uh, authorization forms of allowing, I, I believe it's, it's allowing, uh, me and, and the other consultants on this Zoom call to represent, um, to represent the owners in the application, Richard.
Okay, because there's a different, uh, um, I saw someone, um, from, um, Creed, Anthony, uh, Creed Farm.
Oh, Creed Anthony. I think I said.
Yeah, it was some, there was a, I, I thought it was from the fa- neighbors within five hundred feet or something. And I, 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 I wasn't sure. Certificate of applicant, the board. So that's why I was, uh, looking for clarification on that. And, and if it was, I, I thought that, um, Sue Koff would have been included, but I guess if this is not what this is, then.
Oh, also maybe that was, um, uh, if, if, so it, it was with my material, so the affidavit of publications in there?
An affidavit of, um, I, I don't know what they all are. Let's tell you the truth.
Yeah, so, so those, those are authorization, th- those are authorization forms that, that allows, uh, me and the other consultants to represent ownership of this project.
Okay. And, uh, it's not, uh, and what's the Knollwood address then? That's where.
So if, if there's a Knollwood address in there, uh, if you could just send that to me, it must be.
Well, you know, if you could bring it that back up, I, if you bring it back up, you could see it's thirty-six Knollwood, round back. I, I hereby reside.
Oh, no. Oh, no. So that's, so the, uh, the Knollwood, that's, that's the location of the attorney, uh, representing the owner. That, that's Justin Cole. Do you know Justin?
Oh, yes, sure, sure.
Yeah, that's, so just, Justin moved from Ryan Cliff. He, he.
Yeah.
The Knollwood.
Yeah. What, what, what confused me was I saw the Creed, something about Creed in one of them. And anyway, I apologize for going on. Thank you very much.
Not at all. That's what we're here for, is to ask questions. If you have questions, this is the time to do it. So, and at the public hearing too. All right. So, um, anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll see you guys, um, on, uh, February sixteenth. And in the meantime, we'll arrange. So I think probably, uh, all of us will try to make it at one time just to, um, make it less onerous on you guys.
Appreciate it. And as I said, uh, we'll, we'll have everything staked and delineated for you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. So now we.
Scott, I'm happy to.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, I'm happy to set up that, I'm happy to coordinate setting up the site visit if you'd like. I've done that before.
Oh, sure. That's great.
So I can reach out to all the members and then I'll reach out to Mark and, um, work on dates. So we can get that.
Sounds good. That'd be great. Um, and then just, uh, we have some housekeeping, um, the, uh, the, uh, recommendation by, by Jim. And I think it's correct is that this is under secret. It's a type-two action under six seventeen point five C seventeen. I think that's correct. uh, seventeen. I think that's correct. Um, so I'd make a motion that, um, as far as I know, the planning board has ruled on this. So, um, we can, uh, you know, make a motion that it's a type two action uh, under that section. So I'd make that motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Also.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, Catherine, um, all in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstent, any abstentions? Okay. Uh, and then, uh, the referrals, uh, the planning board, uh, obviously. And then Jimmy said the CAB and the WAC and that's, um, because of its proximity to, uh,
To what?
CAB, WAC, um, proximity to the river, uh, within the L W R P, um, that's, that's the WAC. And then.
Yeah.
HAPAC, um, historic, we're in the historic district. It's also historic property.
Okay.
So we can refer them to them as well. And they've both seen this before. They've been engaged in the planning board, uh,
Yeah.
process.
Okay. All right. So, uh, we have those referrals and I think that's it, except for assigning the, um, the resolution to somebody. Um, who would like to take this one? Do we have any takers?
I guess I'm up.
Are you up? Okay.
Yep.
Well, you asked all those questions about the walkway.
I did ask those questions.
All right. All right. So Tim, you're, 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 you're it. All right. Jim, have I missed anything?
No, I think that covers it, Scott.
Okay, great. All right. So, um, that brings us to the public hearings and, um, I think the Berry matter is going to be a little longer. Um, so I, I would, I, I know it's listed first, but what I like to do is just take, uh, Maitland versus, or somebody here on the Maitland matter?
Yes, uh, it's myself, Chris Schmidt, um, with Needproof.
Hey, you know, Chris.
I'm doing well. How are you?
Okay, uh, I, is there anybody here from the public? Doesn't look like it, but anybody interested in this application? For the public hearing? All right. Uh, it doesn't look like there's anybody here, but, uh, Chris, why don't you take us through this one more time?
Sure. So, um, Jim, are you gonna pull up? You want me to share my screen?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was taking notes. It's not for you.
Okay, no problem. So I'll start with just the overall, you know, what we're looking to install here is an eighteen by thirty-six in-ground gunne pool, um, with an associated patio, um, some landscaping and the pool perimeter fence. The property is, uh, currently, uh, pre-existing non-conforming with the existing setbacks of, um, I believe were corrected on the last meeting of seventy-five feet. Um, on the side, uh, backyard, which I do have some updated plans, which I, I either could share mine or we could continue to review this. Um, but so the variance that we're looking for is on, on the side of the property here. There is some existing, uh, buffer plantings here along the edge, um, of the property. The nearest other property is about three hundred feet further up, Upper Hook Road. Um, you know, the main reason why we chose this location is due to the existing septic fields. Um, and then also the inability to be in front of the house on Upper Hook side. And then the extreme topography next to the house as well, um, and again, being on the roadside of the house there. Um, the, the pool area itself is not visible from River Road, um, and only slightly visible from Upper Hook. As it will be hidden by the existing garage and then some future screening plantings that will be along the Upper Hook side there. And there, there is one, um, possible tree that's going to be removed, um, in the back, which is right behind the garage there. Um, that's a, two trees kind of merged together. So we're, we're looking to take probably one down and that was it.
And Chris, did I ask you this the last time around? Is, is it staked out? So when we go out there and take a look, we'll be able to get an idea of where, where it's going to be?
Sure. It's not currently staked out. Um, I thought we were gonna do a site visit last time between the two meetings. Um.
Yeah, I typically like to do them. My, this is my personal preference is to do them after the public hearing. Because a lot, it, sometimes you hear members of the public express concerns. And I like to have that information, you know, neighbors or other folks. If they have particular concerns, I like to know about that when I go out and do the site visit. So that's why I, I prefer, it can be done at any point in time, but I like to do it after the public hearing in case there is somebody. So.
Sure.
But I, I have this resolution and I'm definitely going to be doing the site visit between now and, uh, the next meeting and I'll have a resolution ready for the next meeting, I assure you.
Okay, great. Yeah. So no problem. I was just curious, but yeah, I can definitely, um, get it staked out. So if you want to go at your leisure or if you wanted to schedule a time to go, um, you know, if you felt beneficial to have me there when you went, I'm happy and, you know, willing to go. Um, but if not, I'll get it staked out maybe by the end of the week, if not early next week.
Okay. I think it's always good to have, um, you present, um, or somebody there. Um, and then Jim, do you want to, uh, make the same, um, uh, offer of, of coordinating this or?
Well, I offered because it's, you know, the whole group, I think for the last one. Um, if you want me to help coordinate all site visits, I can certainly do that. I don't want to, you know, it depends on whatever's easiest for everyone.
I'm, I'm definitely gonna go out. Um, I, I mean, I can, I can talk, uh, to Chris. I assume there'll be a couple of other board members who might want to go out as well. So.
Um, I'd like to, I'd like to do, go with you on the site visit. Um, Scott, do you want the pool and the fence staked out both? We, it seems like we ask for both.
Yes. Um, if he, if he can stake both out, so we have a, an idea of, of, uh, where it's going to be situated on the property. It's, it's very helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Chris, should I contact you?
Yes, that'd be best. I'll be the one going out to meet with you and, uh, and stake out. So that'd be best, please.
Okay, then, then I'll, um, I'll coordinate with Catherine and, and whoever else wants to go out and, and give you a call. But I'll give you a, I'll give you a little time to get the things staked out, um, before we, we, uh, we come and visit.
Okay, excellent.
Um, No, you know, I noticed the fence is a, uh, is that gonna have, uh, some type of wire mesh on the one side of it?
Yeah, we're gonna do wire mesh on the outside to meet the pool code. Um, we wanted to do the paddock style to fit in with the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Existing.
So Tim, Tim, I think it was your question, uh, from the planning board perspective, um, we always ask the applicants to put a note on the plan to state that the fence will be to state code. Uh, we'd like to see what the material is, certainly if it's on historic property. But we don't necessarily at the planning board level, I want to say that that is or is not consistent with state code. That's for the building department to, to ensure when they go out, when it's constructed. But we do require that note to be put on the plans.
Well, I guess what, and this is coming to. The reason for my question is, is, um, is the nice side of the fence going to be facing the neighbors in the back or is it going to be the wire mesh?
The mesh will be on the outside as per state requirements. We can't have it on the inside.
Yeah, okay.
And then, uh, Jim, we will, we're working on, uh, getting all the information together for the planning board as well. So we'll, we'll get that hopefully soon. And get that to you with the updates on the plans and everything else as well.
Right. Yeah. I just want to make sure the, the board is aware that we do that at the planning level. And this is coming to the planning board for review. Um, typically, you know, with fences come in, the, the quote unquote nicer side needs to face the neighbors, uh, but certainly if there are regulations for state code for safety, that would, that would trump that. So, um, that's why we rely on the applicant in the building department to make sure it's done to code.
All right. Do, any, uh, questions, concerns about the application? Um, Jim, I, I, and Gretchen, I guess is for, for both. Yeah. I, I didn't see that we have gotten any referrals, uh, back and he, and comment from any of the folks we referred to yet.
No.
Okay, we still have a little bit of time.
Um, I, I also think just in the discussion on the fence, there's quite a line of evergreens between the two properties, isn't there? Like, more than even one tree deep.
So, yes, there is. And we're gonna put the fence, um, you know, right along the edge of the existing lawn, along the trees there. Uh, we're not going to be removing any trees. We want to maintain that buffer for privacy as well.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think a lot of the evergreens were planted by the other property. So there's a fairly dense row of evergreens, but I don't even know if they can see the fence.
I don't think they would be able to from their house.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, not hearing any. I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, that's Richard. All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Tim Allenbrook, okay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh, Chris, the public hearing has been closed. We have sixty-two days to render a resolution uh, on the application. Um, I will tell you, I will have it ready for the February sixteenth. Um, meeting, you do not have to be present. Uh, you're more than welcome if you have nothing better to do on a Wednesday evening. Um, you can, you can join us. Uh, they usually come towards the end of the, um, um, agenda. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, you know, uh, if you can stake that stuff out in the next, um, you know, week or so, um, we can have, and then maybe in a couple of weeks, Catherine and I and anybody else, um, who wants to join us will come out and, uh, and visit with you and, and go through it. Won't take long.
Okay, sounds great. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time tonight and, uh, we'll see you on the site.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, last up here is the, uh, Berry application and I see Shawna is here with us tonight. Um, and, um, I, I, I know I asked this question before and I think you, you, you gave it to us, but I, I can't find it. I'll be very candid with you. Um, were, were the renderings, Jim, did, were you able to, I, I know I thought you, because I know you watched the, the Maitland thing that, that the first time around and I know, I thought you supplied us with that. So.
I did. Yeah. After we met the last time, I can pull them up again. I know I sent them to Gretchen, like, so it's actually like, right. Size and we did this.
I've got those, Scott. I was able, I was able to get those from Gretchen before the meeting. So we're, we're set. I can bring those up.
So Shawna, why don't you just take us through, I mean, it's a pretty simple application, but just take us through briefly. Is there anybody here for this application? Anybody who is interested in this application? Okay, Shawna, just if you can just take us through briefly, you know, what, um, uh, application is about?
Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, this is, I think a lot less exciting than the other ones. This is just a seven by seven hot tub. No fence, no trains, um, just a seven by seven. We did the site visit already. We're asking for a Berry, basically. Um, cause it's eighteen or eighteen point five from the property line. Um, but we did have them submit a letter to the board. We did have them come over as well, the neighbors, and do a site visit. Their house is about three hundred and thirty feet from the hot tub, but their property line is right there. Um, so, um, so yeah, sorry, I'm just looking at my notes. I'm not great with math. So yeah, that's, I guess that's kind of it. It's just a seven by seven hot tub. That's all. We're requesting nothing fancy. Um, and I did the renderings. Yeah, I submitted those things. I knew you guys had asked that last time. So that was, were more helpful. So I submitted those. So it's a realistic and it's the actual hot tub that we are clearly purchased it. So at least you can actually see the correct color and the size and the model and everything. Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
And your neighbors are Woody and Colleen?
Yeah, and they submitted an email as well and I hadn't really come over. Yeah, those are the renderings. Thank you.
Okay, there we go.
Um, but yeah, I sent all, all the stuff I did. I sent everyone a Christmas card with their notice. Everyone was very nice about it. Um, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. A site visit was helpful because they came out and held measuring stuff. Not sure if they're on the call, but everyone was very nice who came out.
Yep. Tim Allenbrook and, uh, Richard.
Oh, I remember. Okay. Everyone has, we have our mask on, so it's harder to tell. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi there.
It's nicer to see you without our masks.
Um, but yeah, anything else I can provide, we are just like very optimistic. We're excited about this. So anything I can do, I, trust me, I will do it right away.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's fine. We've, we've done the site visit and, and having these couple of renderings is, is helpful. And also quite frankly, having, um, uh, your neighbor, uh, who is going to be, you know, the person affected.
Yeah.
Uh, endorsing it is, is, is also very helpful as well.
That was very nice.
So, um, all right, um, any other, any questions, concerns, pretty simple application? Okay. Not hearing anybody, uh, having any questions or concerns. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Uh, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, Richard, seconds. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, um, Shawna, the, um, a public hearing has been closed and we have sixty-two days, uh, to render a resolution. However, uh, we do have a draft resolution that, uh, Tim did. It's a little unusual to do it, uh, to do a resolution on the same evening that we closed the public hearing. But we may be able to do it and, and I, but I do have a couple of questions and, uh, this goes to Jim and Gretchen. I, we, I know we had to make a referral, uh, to a couple of entities, um, on this, um, on this. And I just wanted to make sure, I, I didn't see any, uh, referrals from uh, any of the, uh, interested parties, the, the planning board, uh, CAB, WAC and, um, uh, the, uh, historic, uh, group. I assume those ref, uh, referrals were made out. And I believe, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, they have, I think, what, thirty days to respond from the date we make the referral, something like that?
Yes. Yes. And I did send out the planning board one. Everyone should have got that.
The planning board didn't respond and no issues, a typical, you know.
Okay.
Take a look at it from your.
It's page nine.
And the code, no issues on the planning board side.
Page nine on the draft. Item number nine. Um, town of Rhinebeck Planning Board is blah, blah, blah. Um, finding that the requests, requested variances raise no significant planning or environmental concerns. I, I had included that, but I had not included the historic. So somebody will.
I have the CAB and WAC. And then, um, uh, the HAPAC as being the two entities that this had to be referred to. And I just, I, I just want to make sure that the, the time has run for them to respond. If they haven't responded to us and their time to respond has expired, then we can go forward. But if it hasn't, then we can't. So I, I, that, that's, that's my only concern. I just don't want to get into trouble.
Yes. So CAB hasn't responded, HAPAC hasn't responded. I know CAB is having a lot of issues with people, so we may not get responses.
Um, When's their thirty days up?
Thirty days. That was on the fifteenth of December. So it's up.
Did you, you referred it on the fifteenth?
Uh, most likely the sixteenth. It wouldn't have went out more than a day or two after the meeting. So.
Okay.
And, and the other.
I can't. I, I can't speak for the HAPAC, obviously, but I do work with them. Uh, this was referred to them because it's in the historic district.
Right.
And typically on applications like this, if it's not an historic property, um, you know, it's well hidden. It's, there's no issues. I would anticipate that that would have been the response, but I've, obviously can't speak on their behalf. Um, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
As their time expired? I mean, Gretchen, did you, you probably referred the, out to them on the sixteenth as well, something like that?
Yeah, when I sent out the referrals, they'll go with the same day.
Right. So the, the thirty days is up is the bottom line. We, we got the planning board, um, response. And the other two haven't responded within the thirty days. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, then I think we can go forward. Uh, Jim, does that sound right?
I, I agree. Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, um, then at this point in time, I think I would have, uh, Mr. Allenbrook. Uh, well, I guess first, uh, what we, technically what we have to do is we have to discuss, uh, the application. I have no quarrel with the application. Um, it, it looks fine to me. Um, it, the, the neighbor is fine with it. It's a simple application. Uh, it seems to make sense. You, uh, you know, the, the placement, I've given the topography and everything else, but I defer to my friends who actually visited the site, uh, to comment on that. Catherine?
I think, yeah, I think it's a, a very logical and probably about the only place for the hot tub. And, uh, it's the least problematic. In fact, I don't think it's problematic at all in terms of the overall site and the views from any direction. So I, I have no problem with the application.
Yeah, I think it's set back just right where it should be. There's, there's no problem with it. I, neither of us had any problem with it. It was a good spot. You know, you're looking out into the woods and you know, probably even, uh, the, when there's leaves on the trees, you probably can't even see Woody's house. You know, probably even, uh, when there's leaves on the trees, you probably can't even see Woody's house.
That's what Woody said. Yeah.
Yeah, right. So it, it was, it was a good selection, I think.
All right. Uh, with those comments, Tim, do you want to take us through the resolution?
Okay. Resolution of the town of Rhinebeck zoning board of appeals at the matter of area variance application of Shawna Berry. ZBA case number 1022. Whereas. Background applicant, the applicant is Shawna Berry, referred to hereafter as the applicant. This appeal is from the town of Rhinebeck Building Inspectors denial dated October 20th, 2021. Property involved, this, this appeal involves property located at 373 Mill Road in the town of Rhinebeck. Which bears a tax parcel number 135089-6069-00-973263. The applicant's property is 5.58 acres. In area and is located in the RA 10 zoning district. Representation, the applicant is represented before this board by herself. Description of the proposed project, the applicant seeks to install a seven foot by seven foot hot tub within a side yard setback. Area variance required, the applicant. Requires one area variance related to side yard setback. As required by paragraph 125-27 point A, point two, point B of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. No structure shall be setback from any lot lines less than the greatest. Of the minimum setback. Forgive me because, um. Uh, this is printed out at half size for some reason. So.
It's on screen. I can zoom in if you'd like.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It'd be easier on screen. I can zoom in further if you'd like.
No, that's great. Cause I, for some reason, will it print this out? Okay, so, um. Okay. It's a long sentence there. No structure shall be setback. From any lot lines less than the greatest. Of the minimum setback as determined. Upon application of the following criteria. 75% of the minimum side setbacks. Set forth within the district schedule of area and bulk regulations for a principal building. In the RA 10 zoning district. In this case, the greatest of the minimum setbacks is 75%. Of the RA 10 side yard setback of 100 feet. Uh, or resulting. In a total of 75 feet. Therefore allowed 75 feet as per above. Uh, proposed six foot six. From a lot side lot line to the edge of the hot tub. And the variance request as a result is 68 feet, six inches. And I hope you guys all follow that.
Yes.
Okay. Secret. No timeliness. The applicant filled an appeal with his, filed an appeal. With the board on November 15th, 2021 and has paid the requisite fee. The appeal was filed within 60 days of the date of the CEO's. Decision appealed from, and thus the application is timely as required by. Paragraph 125-125B of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Acceptance of application as complete. On December 15th, 2021, this board deemed the application to be complete and accepted it for review by this board. SECRE, after accepting this. After accepting this appeal, we determined that. This matter should be classified as a type two action under the state environmental quality review act secret. Because the project involves construction, expansion or placement of. Minor accessory slash pertinent residential structures, including garages, carports, patios, decks. Swimming pools, tennis courts, satellite dishes, fences, barns, storage sheds. Other buildings not changing the land use density. No further review is required pursuant to SECRE. Item I. Public hearing scheduled referrals and responses. We scheduled a public hearing for January 19th, 2022. And directed the secretary to provide notice of the public hearing in accordance with the. Requirements of section 125-125D of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. And to refer the applicant. The application to the following Duchess County Planning Department. We determined that this application was not required to be referred to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Economic Development. Pursuant to paragraph 239- M, the New York State General Municipal Law and one paragraph 125-125E of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. As required by one paragraph 125-125E. Of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This application was referred to the town planning board on December 15th, 2022. I think that should be 2021.
Yeah, we can fix that.
Yeah. Okay, town planning board responded on January 3rd, 2022, finding. That the requested variance raised no significant planning or environmental concerns. Site visit. On January 8th, 2022. ZBA members, Richard. Cops, yeah, let's keep. Catherine Clark and Timothy Allenbrook visited the applicant's property. And the surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting. Surrounding environment and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Purpose of this site visit was to observe. The property and the surrounding areas to inform board members for the upcoming decision. The site visit was conducted solely to gather information and no business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Public hearing, public hearing, which was just a half hour ago. Public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held on. January 19th, 2022. Prior to the public hearing, we received correspondence from the neighbors, Woody and Colleen Deerts. At 345 Mill Road stating. At the app, the quote, the application has no impact on us as neighbors and we urge the application to be approved. Close quote. The public hearing was closed on January 19th, 2022. Findings of fact and conclusions of law balancing test. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the. Area variance is granted as weighted, as weighed against the. Detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We determine. That the variance requested should be granted because there is no detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of this variance. Consideration of five factors. Five factors in the building. In the balancing test. In our review of the variance sought and consideration. Of the balancing between the benefit. To the applicant as weighed against the detriment to health and safety and welfare. Of the neighborhood or community. We have considered the five factors required by paragraph 125-124C1. The town of Rhinebeck zoning law as follows. A, if the variance is granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character? Of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We feel the answer to this question is no, because the proposed seven foot by seven foot hot tub would be a very small element in the landscape. B, can the benefit sought by the app talent be achieved by some method feasible for the app talent to pursue? Other than an area variance. We find the answer to this question is no, because the proposed location for the hot tub is optimized for minimum impact. C, is the requested variance, area variance substantial? We find the answer to this question is no, because the hot tub's minimal footprint of 49 square feet. Will the proposed. Variance, excuse me, will the proposed variances have an adverse impact on physical? Or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no, the proposed hot tub will not adversely impact physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes, because it is the applicant's choice to install a hot tub. Minimal variance requested, in addition to our review of the five factors and balancing test, we must also determine. This requested barriers is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish. What is requested by the applicant and that also preserves and protects the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety and welfare of the community. We find the answer to this question is yes, the applicant has made. A significant effort to locate the hot tub in such a manner as to minimize impact, impact to trees and topography. Result of the balancing test, based on our analysis. Of the five factors discussed above and the consideration of having the minimal variance requested. We find that the balancing test favors granting of the area variance sought. Now therefore be it resolved based on all the facts described above. And upon the reasoning described above as follows, section one. The ZBA hereby grants the variance from zoning law, paragraph 125. Point 27 point A, point two, point B. Finding that the benefit of the applicant outweighs. The detriments to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. Section two, this grant shall allow construction of an above ground seven foot by seven foot. Hot tub located wholly within the side yard setback. And no less than six foot, six inches from the property line. The granting of the variance, section three, the granting of the variance does not above, does not absolve the. Applicant from having to secure any other required permits and or approvals. Proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. The area variance, this will be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. Okay, I think that's as far as.
Uh, good job. Um, I just have a, just a couple of nits. On paragraph one, it's, um, it, it's the town of Rhinebeck interim zoning enforcement officer, Mike Trimble. Was the one who did the letter. So I would just change building inspector to interim zoning enforcement officer. Again, it's a knit. Paragraph five. If you go to the one to, uh, the third line.
Gretchen, can you, can you keep track of these?
Yes.
Yeah, Gretchen's, yeah. So I, I would just, yeah, the, the interim zoning enforcement officer again, knit. And then on the third line of paragraph five, it's, it's, uh, of the, of the, it, it, it said twice. So just remove one of the, of those. Can you see that Gretchen?
Yes.
Right, let's see. Uh, I don't know. The, the only other suggestion I kind of had was, um, and I don't know. What you think about this is on a paragraph 13B is maybe just to add a little bit. It, it, to, to, to make clear that this is really given the topography and, and you guys actually went out there. I did not. And so I don't know if it makes sense or not, just to throw in, just to beef it up a little bit that this is, this is the only real area where you could have it, given the topography of. Of, of the site. And I don't know if that makes sense or not. Um, I, I, I'm fine with the way it is, but if, if we wanted to beef it up a little bit, I would. That, that would be the only suggestion. Any other comments, concerns?
Yeah.
Questions?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yes.
We're good.
We're good. Okay. Uh, with, um, the. The, and, and. As far as any other changes, I mean, other than the ones I suggested that we're, we're fine with that.
Yes.
I think this resolution reads well. All right. Richard, or excuse me, Tim, do you want to make a, a motion?
Sure, I make a motion. Uh, you make the motion. I, I.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we accept the resolution as read with the minor knits. Uh, that I, I voiced. Uh, do I, um, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Gretchen? Do the roll call, please.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tim E?
Yes.
Tim A?
Yes.
All right. So the resolution's been granted and that'll be, uh, I guess Gretchen, you'll have it available probably what tomorrow, the next day, something like that?
Yeah, either tomorrow or Friday.
Okay. So. Um, and I think that is all that we have on our agenda. Let me just see. Yeah, no old business. Anybody have anything else to bring up?
No.
No?
Thank you all very much. And thank you Gretchen. So helpful, that whole process. So thank you, Tavon, but thank you Gretchen very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Enjoy.
Thank you all.
That's right. Okay, um, all right. Anybody have anything they want to bring up? No? All right. Well, I'll, I'll, like I said, um. Give Chris a, a week or so to get those. The fence and the pool staked out and then I'll, I'll ask folks, you know, what their availability is and maybe we can go out and take a look around on, on that project. Okay? Uh, with that said, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, Jim, thanks. And thank you, everybody.